... recording, so I have one request.
Well, one second. I just want to make a note that I would ask people to hold off on public participation so we can have our discussion initially because the vote was confusing.
Correct. Mrs. Fox, I want to just, to reiterate that point, we're going to hold on public participation until the committee has a chance to really kind of lay out the vision. And in addition, with the remote process, for anybody new, by establishing a chat and letting the chair know she can then unmute that individual and allow them opportunity, so we'll have kind of a structure in the event that there's additional questions. But just for very brief backdrop, because it's important from a procedural perspective for committee members and community members, yesterday's action that the board took, which was a favorable vote, was solely looking at April 17th, the Friday day, right, which was a vacation day. The vote was favorable to move that to a remote learning day, and it maintains school vacation. That action was taken last night by the school board. It was a five to three vote. Will Sanquist made the motion. Derek Rasha seconded the vote, and it went forward. So there was no dialogue or discussion in relation to school vacation. The focus of that vote continues to be on the Friday before school vacation, which was April 17th. We moved that day from a vacation day to a remote learning day in light of these circumstances. So moving forward, from a board perspective, unless someone were to rescind that vote, there really is no other action taken tonight, right? That calendar would stand, and we could proceed with remote learning for five days next week, and then school vacation. So just from a procedural perspective, I just wanted to point out that the first action that would have to be taken would be a rescinding of that vote, and then another motion would need to be made if there is, in fact, another motion relative to anything different than what was voted on at yesterday's meeting. Thank you, Mrs. Fox.
Thank you. So we would be looking for a motion to withdraw last night's vote.
Point of order, Jean?
Yes, yes.
That motion has to come from somebody on the favorable side, correct?
Yes. Yes, you're correct, Derek.
Point of order.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Again, from the yes side of the House?
Jean, point of order.
Yes.
Precedent has always been, as recent as I believe last year, when we changed a half day, we never undid the prior vote. We just revoted a new calendar. So help me understand what's the difference between something like that, where it was just a revote of the new calendar, versus we have to undo a vote from yesterday in order to proceed?
That's my understanding of the rule, that we made a vote, that we were contemplating rescinding, which requires a motion and a second, and then we can engage in discussion. So I had a motion. Do I have a second?
If I was on the favorable side, I would second it.
Okay. So the favorable votes were me, Sheri, Will, Laura, yeah.
Correct. It would need to come from one of those five individuals.
I will second it for discussion purposes, because I have some comments and some thoughts on this whole process.
Okay, thank you. So that constitutes a motion and a second.
Jean, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I did not catch who made the motion.
The motion was Sheri?
Thank you.
And now we can open it up to discussion.
So now, just so the board is clear, the discussion is on the vote that was taken yesterday.
Correct. So Will, you said you had some comments.
Yeah, I mean, this whole ordeal, I know it's a polarizing topic, and I know in the community, this is probably as close to a 50-50 split as we're ever going to see. And certainly understand that there were strong feelings both ways. But from my perspective, the school committee discussed this yesterday. There was a vote yesterday. And from there, this kind of took on a kind of another life. And for the first time in my career, and I think I've been on the school committee for 10-plus years, I'm embarrassed to be a part of this community, this committee, due to the fact we had a member go on Facebook, post a poll, solicit feedback on a vote that was already taken by the school committee. It's an absolute joke that we have to come back here and do this all again when the committee has spoken. I know that there are voices out in the community both ways. And the one thing I'm going to continue to hammer home here, folks, is our staff and how hard they're working. I'm legitimately beside myself that we even have to be at the table having this conversation again, because someone decided to go out in social media and kick a beehive. So I'm frustrated. I'm not for opening this up for another vote at all. We made this vote yesterday, and I think it's a bad look for the entire committee that we have to come back and do it again. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Will. Anybody else?
Yeah, Jean, just to respond to that, yeah, I was the one that posted it on Facebook. And quite frankly, I don't apologize for it. We solicit feedback. It was not a mechanism to change the vote. With all due respect, Will, any vote can come back to be revoted upon. This is the process. I don't agree with the notion that we have to undo the vote because precedent has said that we've never done that with a school calendar vote. With that being said, we sat here yesterday, and several members have asked if the teachers and staff were polled. Maybe I misunderstood, but I was led to believe that that was the case. And after the fact, it was determined it was not. So based upon that, I do think it's a reason to revisit, because we have finally gotten some feedback. And I agree with you, that feedback is probably on the lines of a 50-50 based upon different feedback loops. So to answer the two pieces, one, that's part of this committee. Any vote can be revisited based upon this process. And two, we should be getting all the feedback. And unfortunately, we did not have that information, and it is new information.
Yeah, I disagree. It looks like sour grapes from where I'm sitting.
Mr. Maderas?
I just want to clarify. If I misspoke, I thought I was pretty clear. I basically said that I spoke to the executive board, the president, representatives of each of the schools through the executive board and the administrative team. I did not indicate that a poll or survey was taken for all members. And that's pretty consistent in what we've done before. We've got a great relationship with the Teachers Association, the different bargaining units, and their representation, their people, very close to the ground, fully represents them. And I think it actively reflects the most recent action as well. So I just wanted to clarify, it was not stated at any time, for me at least, that all staff were polled or surveyed. It was a representation of what we felt was the group. And as it turns out, the results are consistent today with what I shared last night. Thank you, Mrs. Fox.
Mr. Gracia?
I absolutely agree. Rick was very clear with what he said to the committee yesterday, which was the basis of my decision. It formed my decision, and my decision hasn't changed. And that's why I didn't second bringing this back to a revote. The fact of the matter is that was shared with us. The other fact of the matter is, you don't go out after the fact and try to petition to get an emergency meeting for a revote when a vote was taken. The democratic process is, we have an open meeting. People can voice before and up until that meeting. This was on the agenda. We don't have to go and solicit after that for feedback. We took a vote based on the information we had. I understand that our vote is not going to be 100% accepted by either party. It could be on either side of this. But there is a democratic process that we follow, and it was very clear on the basis of that vote.
And just to clarify, the point of revoting was done even before I wanted to revote, before that poll was posted. So, but it is what it is.
Well, I just know that after we voted, I personally became very concerned about having this time in April at the peak of the surge, and the onus that puts on not only families, but on our public safety personnel. They can't police everything. Parents do their best. Many of them are trying to work from home. Everybody's going through a stressful time. It's not just one group. Everybody is. These are challenging times for everybody. Frankly, the news that I heard between last night and this morning made me very concerned about my affirmative vote. It made me feel that I was potentially putting the community at risk by saying, go ahead and take these days, try to keep them as unstructured as possible, when maybe on the downside, on June 19th, we can leave the buildings, talk to each other, not through plexiglass, but face to face, and look forward to some better weather. I felt that that would be the more prudent action. That's just me. I'm one of eight. But I felt very strongly, we have a significant health issue here, and I did not want to be contributing to making that any worse. Mr. Gracia?
Yeah, and Steve Sylvia pointed that out yesterday.
So did I.
Yeah. The concern I have is, and I can respect that, that you're, you know, that we all want to look out for, but we're not the public safety officers here. We're the school committee. So we have to make the school as safe as it can be while we're on those campgrounds. We're not sending a message to people that go out and not obey the social distancing. We're not sending that message at all by this vote. So I can't sit here and say, yeah, I can support that argument, and here we are. We have a governor, a school commissioner that haven't given us that message, Jean. Why are we sending that? Right, why are we sending that message? That's not our job. Our job is to keep the safety on the ground zone of the school, and our job is the education right now. Our job is not public safety officials.
No, and I would say that I'm a little disappointed in the leadership, that there hasn't been greater direction given. I don't think anyone here believes for a minute that school will be reconvening on May 4th, not if the surge is happening on the 20th through whatever. A surge takes a while to peak, and then it takes a slow while to go down the other side of the mountain. So we're in a difficult time. I'm not saying at all that we're giving people permission to go do things. What I am saying is that we should be exercising all the guidelines, and I'm very concerned that that would be difficult to do, and to rely on our public safety people to have to take on that extra burden, I think is a lot to ask. That's all I was saying.
Jean, Bob Clark had a question.
Yes, Bob.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I'm glad we are revisiting this. And because I have a hearing problem as it is, and my hearing aids have disappeared, so it's even a greater problem for me. And I misunderstood the question yesterday, and I definitely will change my vote today. So I'm glad that we're revisiting the problem.
Okay, your vote was a no yesterday, Bob.
Yes, it was.
And did you know what the no was about? Did you not hear that? I just want to be clear.
I misunderstood. I don't want to take away the vacation.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anyone else?
So that would be Jean's sixth member, then, would that, if that would, the actual vote that Bob now has clarified, that would have supported that decision, which was to focus on the Friday?
Correct.
I don't know if there's further discussion by the board?
I don't see any. Does anyone else have any additional input?
So in the absence of further discussion, you would...
Steve has...
I just wanted to comment. All great points, and not in my wildest imagination that I would sit here thinking that we'd be taking a calendar vote and creating such a divide over. Derek, you made great points on the roles. We all have roles in this. I just, whether it's training or not, I think in a crisis situation, it's unprecedented. I think the role or the responsibility, or at least the perspective from my vote, was to normalize life for our students and create some consistency in a crisis time. And Jean, I thought you did a nice thoughtful job on that responsibility in the beginning, but in no way was this to create a divide. I think the teachers and the leadership team and all the staff in the school system is doing an outstanding job. And this was not a vote in any way against teachers, but more of a public safety perspective, in that you want to try to normalize a schedule in a crisis situation. And I don't think anyone disagrees at this point that this is a crisis and an emergency. And I don't have an overinflated sense of my role on the school committee. It was more just to normalize life for our students and families.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much.
Steve, just not to beat a dead horse, but if I can respond to that real quick, when you put a poll up on Facebook asking if the kids need a break, and that's the basis for the poll, that's leaving our staff, our teachers, our hardworking administrators out of the picture. It's disrespectful, and it's inappropriate.
And again, it was targeted towards the parents. And as I clearly stated in there, it was not an official poll. The disclaimer was put out there. And as I mentioned in that, that there should have been a separate poll to teachers and staff, not on social media, because of the fact that there should be channels for that. So I'm comfortable with the disclaimer and the information that was posted in it. I realize it's a small sample size. It's 200 people versus 2,800 students that we have in this district. I get it. We're going to make decisions that we're not going to be all in agreement with, nor are everyone going to be happy with. There are different reasons. This is unprecedented times, and I don't think any one of us are going to sit here again and having to deal with this. But it is what it is. We should be getting feedback.
I do think it's preferable to try to keep our deliberations in the meeting format and not on a social media format. Someone trying to talk that I'm missing?
Can you repeat that, Jean?
I simply said that I would hope in the future we could deliberate in an open meeting forum and not over social media. I just think it runs, it gets us into trouble. We do come into this with the best of intentions and with as much education as we can put behind us to make our decisions. We don't make everyone happy. That is true. However, we do try to do, make the best decisions based on the best information, and that's best deliberated in our public forum. So, Rick, go ahead.
Jean, I would just say to the committee, if there's no further discussion, you would take action on the motion and the second. And we would just want to clarify what you're voting on if there's no further discussion. I'm not trying to say there shouldn't be. I just didn't have any hands.
I think that we should call the vote.
Hold on a second, Jean. Can I, point of order, there are people in the audience. Normally, we allow for some dialogue. Are we going to allow that?
I think we should.
They may want to hear, Jean, the action of the vote first.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah, but I mean, to Derek's point, a lot of times that feedback occurs prior to a vote.
Just so you know, nobody has their hand up.
Okay, that's helpful. Okay, then let's call the vote.
Can you just clarify for everybody what this vote, what a yes vote would mean, and what it would go to? So that way, everybody is clear.
Right. The vote would be basically what we voted yesterday, which is the Friday, and now we'll include the vacation.
No.
No, actually, Jean.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So the vote that this group should be taking, and please cheer for Jean, you are voting to rescind yesterday's vote?
Yes.
So if you vote in the affirmative, you are voting...
You're voting to pull that vote back, yes.
Correct.
Yes, I apologize. So all in favor of rescinding yesterday's...
Roll call vote, Jean.
There's a roll vote. Yes, it is a roll call vote. All in favor of rescinding yesterday's vote.
Jean Clark?
I am not in favor.
Steve Owen?
Yes.
Sheri Baron?
No.
Bob Clark?
Come back to me.
Okay. Derek Gracia?
Let me be clear. So a no is what again? No is to rescind the vote.
No is, no is you do not support rescinding the vote.
No.
Laura Ramsden?
No.
Will Sanquist?
No.
Steve Sylvia?
Just to be clear, like Derek, so my no vote is to not vote again on yesterday, which I voted no for yesterday. So I'm no on revisiting this topic. Unless the superintendent has any new recommendations, I would trust his leadership and that of his staff. But my comments about the public safety matter over the divide issue that stands still stays current, but no on recapturing this.
Okay, so no. And Bob Clark?
No.
Jean, that was a seven to one vote to maintain the vote from yesterday.
Yes, I understand that. Everybody good? And there was no public comment?
I'll go through.
Ask for verbal.
Nobody has a hand. Well, everybody's muted.
I believe Paula Money had her hand raised.
I didn't see it. Let me see.
It's up now. Paula, if you can hear us, keep it up, so that way Renee could see it. Most of the...
Hi.
... are on the phone only. It has to be a verbal request for comment.
She's muted.
So Renee, can you unmute everyone?
I can unmute everybody.
So at this point, is there anyone to the chair of the school committee that would like to participate in public participation?
I would. Paula Money?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to address you regarding this matter. Again, I, like some committee members, were certainly taken aback to see the public poll on Facebook last evening. And the superintendent had discussed April school break with me, and I in turn had discussed that with my executive board. And as I mentioned in my email to the wall, I am in conversations daily with all of our teachers. This has been a very, very stressful time for all of us. And as I told you, I'm extremely proud of our staff and how quickly they have mustered together and have worked hard to continue education for our children. That being said, we have been led to believe that April school break would proceed as normal. As a matter of fact, I contacted the superintendent when we had our initial discussion about April break, and I offered up the Friday before school break. As you may recall, we, our last contract extended April break by a day to the previous Friday. As a good faith measure, I suggested to the superintendent that we continue remote learning on that day to get an extra day in and advance the speed calendar for one day. I did not think that it was necessary to poll my members, simply because, as I said, I'm in touch with them all the time, and I understand how challenging this is for them. And while I certainly respect your concerns, Mrs. Fox, and the concerns of the other school committee members regarding health and safety, in fact, it is two and a half hours, and I have every confidence in the parents in our district to maintain that social distancing with their children, whether they are in school or they are on a school break. So again, we did do the poll today to hopefully satisfy all concerns. And as of a little while ago, 71% of our members are in favor of keeping school break. And it's because we're exhausted and we're overwhelmed. We started this whole remote learning thing well before other school districts. Plymouth just started remote learning, I believe, like last week. Totten actually started this week. So we were, thanks in part to, you know, some good planning on our administrative team's behalf, we've started this. We've been into this. By the time vacation comes along, we'll be into this for four weeks, not to mention the week before, when we were all thinking about what we were going to do. So yes, we would very much appreciate having that break, re-energizing, regrouping, and then getting back to the hard work that's still going to be left for us. Three days does not make that much of a difference, in all honesty.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Jean?
Yes?
I feel compelled to react to that. We, as a committee, have said all along, we recognize the hard work of the body, the student, the teacher body. That's never gone ignored in any of these discussions. I would have much rather Miss Money come in front of the committee and explain that, rather than have a dialogue through social media. That was absolutely unprofessional. This committee has always been receptive of the union and what she has to offer to the committee. As I stated earlier to the committee, we have an open dialogue. We have a democratic process to spill this out after the fact. Was, was, it was a vote taken. It was a vote in their favor, or in the history of what she's mentioning right now. There was no need to continue that dialogue.
Anxiety was...
Contact the chair. Have it done that way. It costs all of us a lot of further angst and anxiety over this, when we didn't need to. It could have been handled much...
The angst and anxiety came from school actions.
Thank you.
Jean?
Yes.
Can I just interrupt for one second?
Clarifying point here.
There's a lot of feedback from everybody being unmuted. Can I mute everybody again in the audience, just because Jose isn't, he can't hear everybody well enough for a recording? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify...
Hold on one second, Steve. So I gave you access to unmute yourself if you're called upon to speak.
The Facebook did not drive the revisit of this vote. There was a committee member who reached out to the chair prior to this even posted online with a request to rethink this vote. So for many of the members on here who are stipulating that the Facebook was driving this, that is not the case for that.
Yeah, and if I can respond to that, I'm not saying it's driving this discussion, but I'm not saying it was appropriate either.
We can agree to disagree.
Yeah, we can. And by the way, just so, to be clear, the call I did receive from one member was not a determinant. What I worked on was the fact that I was very concerned that I did not vote the way I should have voted, for me personally. And then I've been tuning in. I've been really paying attention, as we all have, to the trends and the concerns in the community about the health of our community. So that, just to be clear, it wasn't that one person said, oh, we need to talk about this again. This was me. This was me.
And I think to reiterate, we understand the staff of stress. Everyone is stressed. This is not something that is, Jean, you had mentioned at the beginning of the call, this is not just relegated to one particular group, what have you. Everyone has had to redefine their normal. So everyone is going through, and there's a separate group that has even a greater stress on the front lines than having to come home with the concern of potentially infecting their own people because they are on the front line. So I've been hearing a lot about stress. I respect it. I totally understand it, but we all have to recognize that that is across the board. It's not just particular to one group of folks.
Most definitely. Mr. Gracia?
No, Steve took the words right out of my mouth. Exactly, there's stress for everybody in all of this. And one of the, you know, when I listened to Miss Money, one of the populations that I wanted to hear from during this process was the parent population. And Rick kind of talked about that yesterday, and again, the basis for my decision. He mentioned all the folks that he reached out to, and I trust, you know, back to Steve Sylvia's point, I trust the administration has a handle of that, just like I trust Miss Money has a handle of her, you know, the body she represents. I trust that when she talks to Rick, she's representing the majority of that body, and that was communicated to us. That was the point of my vote. So I do have a lot of trust in Miss Money, Superintendent Maderas, and the leadership team, that they have the confidence of their representation and representing the will of those folks.
Thank you. Yes. Anybody else? I can't see all the hands. Renee, is there anything else?
I don't see anybody's hand up. Go through, because there's 70 people, so.
Well, I think then...
Are you able to unmute them again, Renee, just to see, just to be sure?
Yep.
I'm assuming in the absence, there's no other comments for public participation from Mrs. Fox? I would go back to unmute them again, Renee, then, and go back to Mrs. Fox.
Okay.
Jean?
Yes. I had to unmute.
So I just, you know, I think we've allowed public participation. I think you've articulated some good points. If I could just add a couple of things prior to closing this piece. Listen, I've been here six years in this district. I'm so proud of our educators, the community, and this board is very supportive. The vote that was taken yesterday and the action today, once again, in no way reflects a lack of support for teachers and educators or the administrative team, and it wasn't taken that way. Mrs. Fox and I had a conversation very early this morning, and we really centered around safety and well-being and health, and so I need to make sure I convey that. So regardless of the outcome of the vote from yesterday and today, I think it's important that the school community understands that it was really trying to look at the best interest of all the stakeholders and make sure that it's a safe place. And I do think my recommended calendar, which appears it's going to stand, which calls for a full week of remote learning next week, and then a school vacation, then a restart, allows for that. We certainly will, we're planning some activities and structures that we hope will encourage families to keep social distancing and all those safeguards that, as Jean, you pointed out, are going to be essential in the coming weeks. And I think we're going to hear some more from the governor and the commissioner soon about extending this piece. But I just want to make sure that those individuals who did not support the vote last night, in no way were they not supporting educators and teachers. They told me that individually. It was more a reflection of some concerns relative to safety and health and not about workload. I couldn't agree more. There's an anxious anxiety level. There's a social-emotional piece to all of this for all of us, and I felt very good when I talked to my leadership team and representing the teachers that we'll be in a better place with our kids, and our children will be a better place based on the recommended calendar that you voted on yesterday, and now you've carried through. So thank you for that opportunity. I felt I was supported throughout the process, and I hope my educators ultimately, when we conclude today, feel the same way. Thanks, Jean.
Thank you. So I think we've concluded the business of the meeting. Is there anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. I have a second, and we'll do a roll call.
Sorry, was that Derek that seconded?
No, that was me, Renee.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Jean Fox?
Hi.
Steve Owen?
Hi.
Jerry Baron?
Committee has to unmute themselves to vote.
Hi.
Derek Gracia?
Hi.
Sorry, Bob Clark? Laura Ramsden?
Hi.
Will Sankwitz?
Hi.
Steve Sylvia?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. We are adjourned.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Stay safe, folks. Stay safe.
Thanks.